All right, we're going to officially call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, April 4th, 2:05 PM. And it's a public safety meeting. My name is LeVar Click Bruce, Chairman of the Public Safety. We also have Counselor Michael Fenton as a part of this committee and also our Chairman Jesse Lederman on this call. And I also see representatives from Western Mass News, Paul and Lauren. So I had a conversation with Commissioner or Superintendent Clappert, and she wanted to come on to discuss discussion of her position and responsibilities of her role with the Police Department and also have a discussion on the Board of Police Commissioners. So those are the two items that we have today. So I want to have Superintendent Clappert kind of take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Counselor Fenton and Counselor Lederman for being on it. And what I noticed the other night in front of the City Council was maybe some confusion has to my role versus the Board of Police. What the exact responsibilities are right now and why? And I will tell you, I day-to-day operations of the Springfield Police Department, I see the hiring.
Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. You're just coming in and out a little bit. Madam Superintendent, I don't know where your microphone is located, but I just want to make sure we're able to hear you clearly.
Okay, I don't know where it's located either, so I would help us out with that.
It's a little, it's clearer now that you leaned in, so I think it should be good. I just didn't want, I didn't want your remarks to be distorted.
Okay, thank you. If you don't mind a close-up of my face here, then I'll lean in. I just wanted a little bit of a clarification of what I see my role and what I see the role of the Board of Police Commissioners, maybe to help you out a little bit, maybe to help the Board of Police Commissioners out. They've been put in a little bit of a difficult task, I think, in that their role is the discipline of officers of the Springfield Police Department in cases that we foresee being of a five-day suspension or greater, or in cases that I asked for them to take a look at, which I can see once in a while may occur, or in cases where we just can't determine. The command staff and I review a case for discipline and perhaps we're at a standstill where we really don't know which way to go with it, then that should be theirs to determine. And that's set out that way specifically during this time period because of my contract, basically, of having the responsibility of the hiring and promoting and the part of the disciplinary process, which would be the five days or less. So I continue to do that. It is a full-time job. It's not the police department of old when we had the old police commission who could perhaps take on a lot of that responsibility. Hiring in and of itself is quite the arduous task where I usually have a few of the command staff with 30 years or more experience. I'm going out again? Can you, is this all right?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Give me a little signal if I. Hiring is because we get an interview process. And the people they ask the questions in the interview process, to me, are people who have been there and have the experience and kind of know what to ask. I find that to be very important. So I will have a couple deputies or a captain with experience ask those questions and see if we can weed out from the beginning some candidates who are not going to work. We've come a long way. We're trying to do our best. Last thing I want is someone to sneak through with any nefarious reasons for being on this police department. So that's an important job. So because of that contract that I have in existence and I do retire next May, I am a year timer here, so everything may change after that. The Board of Police Commissioners, having the serious disciplinary case, find themselves in a tough situation because most personnel matters by HR are an executive session and cannot be talked about. So to ask them to go into the community and share with the community things they might hear or the hearings they might be going to hold is kind of a tough spot to put them in. They have had a hearing and they have made a termination, and I agreed with that termination. They did quite well with that case. They caught on to that case and we terminated an officer. Having said that, I will tell you that I wanted to share with you and I thought it important to share with you that the best word I can describe for the police department at this time is fragile. It's fragile because we are shorthanded. No one's coming around the corner to help us. We are having a hard time retaining and recruiting. I looked for an academy of 50. I have 27 who may graduate at maybe 26 the end of May. That's not really going to help us by the time I get them trained and street certified to go out and join in a busy summertime when we're looking at events like Iron Man, Fourth of July, Enshrinement, et cetera. So it's fragile because and is different because of other years, because of the non-investment of young officers to a law enforcement agency. The storm is set up that if you are post-certified in Massachusetts, you can go to any police department in Massachusetts. So we have a residency here in Springfield and you have to be a resident for 10 years. So if you are starting a family and this is not where you want to reside, you have some choices you can make. I would say my best estimate is 40% of the Springfield Police Department at this time have 10 years or less on the job and do not feel they have an investment in the department. You have departments in Florida who are offering signing bonuses. You have departments in New York who are starting to offer signing bonuses. You are well-trained here in Massachusetts through MPTC to be a certified police officer. That puts you on a high stepping stone. So to say we're fragile, I think, is putting it nicely. We're 26 short now. I will lose two more in May. I will lose three or four in June or July. If there's some difficult situations going to have to be made here and I'll do it, but I'm not happy about it. One of the answers is to disassemble the Traffic Bureau. Springfield used to have a Traffic Bureau of some 20-something officers on days and about 12 on evenings. We now have a total of eight total. I could put them into the squad because three of them are going to retire in July. They just came out with the statistics and fatal accidents, injury crashes, and pedestrian fatalities were higher last year than in the 16 years prior. So it's not an area I take lightly to say I will disassemble the Traffic Bureau and put them into the squad when down in my heart of hearts, I truly believe traffic enforcement is needed more, not less. But I don't find myself in the position to do that. We're down officers and we're trying our best to keep morale up. And it just seems like this consent decree is a constant battle for us to meet the agreement as we said we would. We are. We're doing well with it. We have not missed a deadline. It's asking a lot of the officers. Policies and procedures are changing. I'm trying to implement training as best I can, being short-staffed. The overtime budget's going to go up a bit because I cannot at this time afford to train people separately. It's on an overtime basis. I'm giving overtime to replace that body so that we're not hurt on the street. Your call volume has not gone down. Days is averaging around 350 calls a shift. Evenings is 350 to 400 calls a shift and midnights is averaging around 250 calls a shift. We are up a bit in felonious assaults last month. The country was up a lot more than we were. We're holding our own and we're down in some property crimes and we're down in some of the B and E crimes in those categories. But there's still a lot of guns on the street. There's a lot of guns on most city streets. Your Firearms Investigation Unit has done well. We're over 50 guns already this year, having seized without having complaints against the officers. So I think my reason for this call, Counselor, is simply to inform you that as a Superintendent of the Police Department and you as Public Safety Committee should know, I think we're in a fragile state. I think we're a day-to-day. I think we're going to have a busy summer. I'm scrambling to hold on to people. I have talked to the state police. They are in the same boat. They are short also and can't guarantee the help, but they certainly will try. I've secured them up for Iron Man, the fireworks, and the enshrinement. So events like that, I want to make sure that we are definitely covered. The Sheriff's Office volunteers all the time and he's there for us and he is definitely a resource. But I will let you know, he is a resource that is not as trained as your Springfield Police Officers are. They do not, at this time, have gone through the Bridge Academies and are certified. He's starting to do that now. They are so far not. They do not carry body worn cameras. They do not have the use-of-force policy and the training that we have gone through. So concern there about that would be, now's not the time to lower my standards. I don't want another hiccup. So you know, I want to keep level service and I want to keep trained service. And we've worked hard to meet with that settlement agreement. We're doing well. I think the compliance evaluators would tell you the same. But I wanted to let you know that I'm actively involved in and I still have the hire-promote and part of the discipline package per my contract. That goes on every day here. Every day, there's some re-trains, mostly because of the training that we've been encountering, some written reprimands and a couple suspensions to keep people in line here so that we're not having that mistake again. Hiring will resume again in August for the next academy, which again, I'll shoot for 50. Residency and qualifications get in the way a little bit, but we're going to keep trying to get that 50. I agree with a lot of the neighborhoods. I would love to have C-3 officers and units in every neighborhood. That is an impossibility at this time. Matter of fact, they're short and that's who I grab from because they do not take assigned radio calls. So we're short in C-3. We're a little short in the squads. One ordinance officer down, two K-9 officers down. And as the summer goes on and God forbid, some officers tend to go out injured, we could be faced with some more problems. But I wanted to just to update you. You're the Public Safety Committee. You should know those things and I wanted to make sure you did.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. Open up to any counselors that may have any questions. Seeing none. Anybody on the call have any questions for Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly wanted to defer to the members of the committee. If none of them have questions, I'm happy to ask a couple, but I'll defer to you and the members of the committee.
Yep. Counselor Fenton had his hand up, so the floor is yours, Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Superintendent, for that report. I think the impact of attrition and our newfound difficulty, I'll say new as in the last few years, of recruitment, given the intensive training standards, residency requirement, and overall climate and law enforcement, certainly has, I take it, posed serious challenges to the department. And I recognize that and just speaking for myself and as a member of the Residency Compliance Commission, this is, this is an important issue for us to monitor. Speaking for myself, I acknowledge this as a material issue for public safety and something that we have to, we have to have a conversation about. So for the benefit of the participants on this call, the Residency Compliance Commission has been meeting monthly. We're in our about 18th month now of operation. We have a meeting on this Thursday and one of the items on that agenda is to hear from department heads, not just police, but other departments as well, about what issues they're seeing in recruitment. And we're going to make a full report on what the impacts of that requirement have been on the operations of various departments. So I just, I wanted to say that for the record, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that. Welcome also, Counselor Govan and Counselor Allen as well. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you very much, Chairman Click Bruce and Superintendent for your testimony. You certainly identified several areas and challenges that we need to meet, both as a department and a city. And I think that they, you know, have certainly also been discussed in prior meetings for the last several years as Counselor Fenton has spoken to. I'm wondering, as we approach here the budget season and certainly the conversation that will ensue once the final budget is recommended by the mayor, what have the conversations looked like around that in the recent budget hearings with the administration? And are there any particular requests that you're currently looking to see fulfilled to perhaps assist with some of this and also any other, you know, direct recommendations you might have, either from a budgetary or policy standpoint that we might be able to meet, you know, through our roles in the city?
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, and yes, we're submitting a budget for level service. So obviously, level service is still going to be up, I believe, at 13%. But I would just remind the council and ask the council that to please realize that overtime is my survival rate here. It's the line that keeps us going. So when you see the overtime budget, I don't know offhand now, but just know that the training budget is low and the overtime budget is what I depend on for training because we take a person, we'll take an officer, like in April, all the supervisors are going again to make sure we have the software down pat, that blue team, the use-of-force reporting. I want to make sure everybody is on the same page with that. So we take a supervisor for a Thursday and send them to school for eight hours for that. They're replaced by overtime, by callback to fill that slot. So that's how a lot of the training is done because most of the training is done between eight and four and a lot of officers work off hours. So just understand that the overtime budget this summer, we may have to come back and ask you for, if I lose more officers, it's going to be very, very difficult. And it's hard to predict right now. I'm trying to hang on to them. Two that left me last month, one I certainly understand. Connecticut, he's starting a young family. He wants to live in Connecticut. The other officer, there's an opportunity for him. He's young enough to start over again. Again, the investment's not there like in my early years, so it's hard for me to relate to this. When we became police officers, we were here for 32 years and aged 55. I never thought of pulling up stakes and leaving with eight or 10 years on the job, but I understand it now. You can go down to Sarasota and get a $25,000 signing bonus. If you're a young person with no roots in the area, that's understandable. So I cover that through overtime and my concern with overtime is, for some reason, the younger generation, they don't want to work overtime. So I'm faced with another problem I never had. Officers would always grab overtime and now it seems like this generation X or whatever it is, they'd rather have their time off. So you know, it's a concern to me. The lifeline here is the overtime budget to keep details filled and to keep people downtown safe whenever we have something downtown and it's difficult. But that's why the training portion may be lower than the overtime budget. The training we use in-house, we have people who are very certified here to train. So just understand for me that overtime is my lifeline.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, in that, I think that is an important distinction, Superintendent. And relative to that, how many do you know off the top of your head? And if you don't, that's all right. You know, we can get it later. How many funded vacancies currently exist in terms, so when we're looking at the budget in terms of the total for personnel, do you know how many vacancies currently exist that are, so in other words, we're not, it's funded, but we're not paying it out?
Yeah, currently it's 26, Counselor, and three are supervisors and the rest are patrolmen. But like I said, I lose a lot now in June and July. I do have predicted at least five retirements, maybe more. And then every once in a while, I get surprised by somebody who's taken another opportunity. So, and we tried to go over last academy, again, we tried for a 50-class recruitment to go over a little bit and maybe have some extra bodies, four C-3 in different areas or four ordinance officers. And we just can't get them. So I would be looking for you, to you for help too in the recruitment. If anyone's got any ideas, we are in with Putnam High School. We're within with their criminal justice program. We do send officers to speak. I do participate in career days and have the Quebec officers talking to some of the seniors in the high schools, but it's been a real problem.
And in that, in that same vein, Superintendent, the expenses that are being borne as a result of the consent decree, in other words, the required expenditures by that, are those all being submitted directly under your budget? Or are they in finance or any other department? Or is everything in the SPD?
As far as I know, Counselor, everything's in the SPD budget.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Govan, you have your hand up. Floor is yours.
I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you for being here, Superintendent. I'm really sorry I missed the beginning of the meeting. I was running late, but I'm surprised, I guess, to learn that there's only 26 vacancies. And I know maybe for me, that's only, and for you all, that's a lot. So with those 26 vacancies, that's, I guess, my main concern and probably the reason why you have to pay, you know, so much overtime because you don't have enough staff. Superintendent, I heard the other day, and I'll take my glasses off, that is it true, so when they go through the academy, once they complete the academy, they, the cadets would have to pay $3,500 to get their uniforms and everything else that they need? Is that true?
They do, they do pay for their own equipment. I'm not sure, the total, Counselor, if you say 3,500, that's probably accurate. What most departments do, and we have not, is we, there's a sliding scale that Springfield, the Chicopee uses it a lot. They, for example, if you get trained by Chicopee Police Department and you leave in the first year for another town, for another police department, they charge you 5,000 for the training and that goes down every year. If you stay two years, 4,000, et cetera. We might look at that also because it's over 860 hours of training that Springfield pays and puts into the recruits. Yes.
Okay, and so I guess my concern, you said that the last class, you were hoping to get, I think, over 50 cadets on the force. And remind me, how many did you, came through and are now on the force?
We tried for 50 slots to prepare for all the vacancies that we'll have by the end of the year and then some. And we ended up with, right now, I have 27 in that class. They're slated to grad, yes, 27 slated to graduate May 28.
Okay, and then those that graduate at that time, they will have to pay the $3,500, which from what I've determined, I guess, to some of the cadets because they can't afford it. You know, they can't get to the next. I apologize and I'm not moving anymore, so I'm parked. Can you hear me now better?
Yes, I got you.
Okay, great. So I apologize for that. So I guess my concern would be that because averaging, you know, coming out of the academy, say you have 27 graduates, I'm just wondering how many are going to have to drop out because they can't afford the $3,500 for their equipment and their uniforms and such. So that's just something that I guess I want us to think about.
I don't think that's the case, Counselor. They don't owe anything when they graduate. They got to buy their khakis and some equipment when they go in. When they come out, they're getting, yeah, when they come out, they're getting a police officer's pay. They don't owe us anything.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for that. And then, and also, I guess, I was concerned about the overtime and how young people, you said Gen, I think it is Gen Z or Gen X or whatever. I think they've learned, and the pandemic, I think, showed this to us, is that they've learned that, you know, they don't want to kill themselves for a job that, you know, God forbid, if something happens to them, we'll be there, somebody else will be there to take that job the next day. And I think that's the reason. So I'm just wondering if we might be able to think about different ways of, you know, making it be what it used to be. Like when you joined the department, Superintendent, Admiral, you know, job and people wanted to be on the force. So that's just something that I think we need to look at and find ways to make it be, you know, a place for people to want to work at. I'm glad to hear that you are in the schools. I'd love to maybe see if we could go to more schools and recruit from the high school class because I'm thinking about that for the city jobs as well. That's a very smart thing to do, so I appreciate you doing that. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, and I would just add to, Superintendent, just on to copy or piggyback off of Counselor Govan, I think it'd be imperative or important for us to, and you might already be doing it, concentrating on the younger generation as well, meaning not necessarily the high schoolers, but the middle schoolers. Just kind of plant that seed a little earlier, just, you know, just a thought.
I agree.
And then the second piece of this is more of a statement, or I guess it is a question. Should we be concerned with, you know, the nicer weather is coming up and we have some of our, like the Stone Soul Festival, some of our other festivals that'll be going on? Maybe this falls in the lines of the overtime, which you spoke about. But should we be concerned with the lack of officers that will be taken off the streets? Or, but it's something to think about, or I guess that's my question. Is this something that we should be worried about or?
I don't think worried about it. I thought it important enough for it to be on your radar. I think you should have the knowledge of where we stand and I think the good word was fragile. I mean, when I came on, it was an honorable profession. And when we came on, we knew we were going to give 32 years. You're going to be 55 years old. You get a pension. I don't know if it's the demeaning of the profession, the changing of the generations, but if they don't like it here one day, the investment's not there anymore. So it's definitely, the fragile was the best word that came to mind to let you know.
Absolutely. Counselor Govan?
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was just reminded the department, right? And I know, we all know what the climate of police departments have been across the country. You know, systemic racism, the oppression, the, you know, the anger towards police officers. You know, I think if we work on fixing, right, the structural racism. fixing, right, the structural racism and the systems that are in place to help police officers feel safe, right? Communities feel safe. I think that will help our police departments. We just saw the report in the Boston Globe about the Massachusetts State Patrol, um, having to pay $40 million for a lawsuit regarding discrimination, you know, so this is not a Springfield issue. This is a countrywide issue. And I'm just hoping that we can start here to, you know, help to eliminate that for our officers and for our community. Thank you.
I, I agree, Counselor, and you, you got a good stepping stone here in, in Springfield. We are beyond parity. We are definitely, uh, 56, 44 minority officers from people in the city. So we represent the, the city. We, we, we do not have any racism complaints against us currently. The, the suit to which you refer is civil service. It was a promotional exam, um, that they're paying out, but i- i- it's, it's, uh, you've got a good police department and I think I'm just looking for help to promote it and, and get it back to, to where it was. And I, I think if, if anybody wants to come in and look at the number of people we interact with on, on a daily basis, weekly basis and yearly basis here and, and the versus the complaints of any type. Um, you know, I think it'd be proud of it and, and we can work together is what I'm looking for to make a better police department and help me attract better recruits.
Absolutely. And that's always my, my concern. I'm sorry, I'm Mr. Chair. Um, the collaboration that we need to have between the community and the police department, you know, um, our civil, um, civic engagement and, and, you know, all of it. So we need to make sure we're working together. Um, so that we can, um, you know, continue to improve. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Right, absolutely. All right. Any, any further questions? Or comments? Superintendent, do you have anything else you would like to, go, sorry, go ahead, Counsel, President?
I was gonna simply say, uh, uh, thank you again and, and my door is certainly open uh, to the Superintendent and the command staff, uh, as it always has been, uh, to discuss further in the future.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, Superintendent, do you have anything additional you'd like to add?
I, I, I do not, Counsel. So I thank everybody for their time. I just thought it was important to, uh, you know, relay some concerns with you and ask you for your help and your suggestions. And believe me, I appreciate it and thank you.
Right. So again, Superintendent, thank you for, for reaching out to me and, um, it's really appreciated. And I'm looking forward to working with you uh, to make sure we can come together for the common good of the city of Springfield because that's important for me, uh, the city of Springfield. It's, it's bigger, bigger than LeVar Click Bruce, right? And it's, uh, the city of Springfield is going to be here when I'm gone. So we want to make sure we're putting things in place where we can say that we're proud of and, uh, like Counselor Govan spoke about, we know those things. Those things that are going on in the community, but not also not here, but all over the world. So how do we work together to make sure for the common good of City of Springfield? So that's, that's key for me. And I'm, I'm, you know, my door is open to working with you, um, to make sure some of this stuff is, uh, attained. And I look forward to working with you in the, in the next coming, coming days and weeks and months and years. So we're here for you.
Thank you, Counselors. I appreciate it.
Uh, if that's not it, we will, uh, definitely, uh, end the call. Nobody has anything else to say?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.